I'd like to call the Grand County Board of Education Special Call Meeting Public Area and Listening Statute to order. Second, Roman Duvall, it's introduction topic, future plans of the School Resource Office with programs, and I have designated the chair to say a new word.
It's good to see you, this crowd out in the city, so glad you're here. Actually, thought we'd have a room full of people, so. We've got, I guess, some of the meetings. So, I've been a part of the school system various ways for 20-plus years. I don't want to flit that, but I have. And, but I remember back when my SRRO program had started. And I'm guessing, not guessing, but roughly 25, 30 years ago. And it started with one individual, and then a few years later, we added a second. And so those two gentlemen, they aged up 20, 25 years, I think, till they both retired. Now, I guess at some point, everybody deserves that opportunity. But during those years, our SRRO program is operating and operating very well. It's been in due, and it's managed by other students and school districts. I'm proud of the program that we have established and has with us to date. Till now, till now, this is the first time that such a proposal has ever been made to transfer the, or relinquish from school system to relinquish their authority of a SRRO to the person personally. So listen back, look just a few weeks, and see why we're all here, you see, what draws The way I understand it, the school board member approach our sheriff's department, talks with this proposal. I didn't, I was bored when we did that vote at the time, and did not know it until it became the agenda item for a march meeting. So this proposal quickly ballooned much earlier, very. And so, so at our march meeting, George Department, talks, is, is Chief Deputy spoke, and there were various typically in the community, in our school system, that spoke as well. So we had a grounding, I guess you might say, of ideas on that at that given date. So this, this has become, in just a matter of a few weeks, very hot topic for our county and for our school system. But I hope it's not a divisive problem, because our students and staff are made of the best student. Issue one on the computer, that's just the way I see it. And again, it does not have to be a status decision, in my opinion. So we're here to, we're here today to, to listen, board is, we're here to listen, and various folks in our community, sheriffs department, our school system, state. And again, this is pretty much just a listening session, is that right? There's no, we appreciate all of being together. And I'll close with just one idea, or. Again, going back to, to our original, the original statement I made about the beginning of our SRRO program. I'll mention, I won't mention his name, but one gentleman in particular, 25-plus years of experience, that he dedicated to law enforcement, and most of that is in SRRO. Again, 25-plus years. Those years were spent building trust and relationships, building trust and relationships among students, among staff, and faculty. That's what's all, that's what is all we do. That's the model of service that our kids deserve, and our faculty and staff deserve. And all we think that is the model of service that our staff, kids, faculty deserve. So again, appreciate you being here. And Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you having us here.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to grab a question on some of the questions we've had. Board member made a profound, open to see care potential, and you may come into a board member.
It is my understanding that one individual board member approached the, approached the sheriff's department, that's my understanding, if you can correct me, this is.
Let the board members, in the raw, as important as you're on this thing.
Yes.
The purpose of the public team is to gather information and your opinions from the community, and not expand them, so.
Okay.
The clear is to gather information and your opinions of the community, and that's key. Board members follow the framework of senior clarification to the criteria. Since back four years, it's just about here, and we respond to the community's secret.
Okay. The third bullet, comments from the Grand County Sheriff's Office. Go with you.
If everyone please will speak into the microphone clearly, so that we're getting it out everywhere that we need to, please.
Mr. Chairman, how long have we got to talk? You got, as long as you want, okay.
More like should have been outside.
Just let it talk. Is that all? Yes. Yeah, there is no time limit on this, too. Yeah, I have to put the time limit on this. For those of you who don't know who I am, I was elected sheriff here in Grand County in 2022. Yeah, you need to bring her all the way up, too.
It's all, it's all.
It's all, yes.
Speak right in.
How about that? But as the way it's, okay, you bank that shadow. I was elected sheriff in 2022 here in Grand County. One of the times that I politicized was, I said SRRO was a better project than school. I'm not saying that it was a weak program, a weak program that had worked, and current SRROs have done a good job, high SRROs have done a good job. But the times has changed, and I'll give you an example. Since I came in as sheriff, there used to not be many issues at the school. But since I've been in, we've been here to address great four different student issues since I've been in, back 12 years. Shortly after I came in, we ran a bomb threat here in the school. We didn't know where it was at, didn't know anything about it. I was contacted that night from Assistant Superintendent. We came out, we secured the school, we called appropriate personnel, it was the SBI and several other state agencies and county agencies. Within 12 hours, we identified the person's threat, and they were successful to get that done. Sheriff's Office has got a lot of additional personnel that we can bring to the forefront being over the SRRO. We're not looking to get rid of any SRRO. We're just going to work with them and build on the jurisdiction issue. I brought several people with me this evening, with Cody George, which is Chief Deputy, he's going to give a fair court presentation about liabilities and jurisdiction. Travis Brooks, he's the captain over investigations and over training. Since I've come into the sheriff's office, one of the main priorities is that we do additional training here in case of abuse. Since I've been in, we've done training here after school hours at least once a month, and we bring several personnel in from school and they got trained back. I brought David, which is the attorney for the sheriff's office. David is also a teacher for the sheriff's association, and he's the attorney for many other sheriff agencies here in North Carolina. I believe all the agencies that he represents, SRROs are underneath the sheriff's office, and he's going to speak also on liability and jurisdiction issue. So if I could, let Cody George give you a short presentation. Sheriff Carter's going to be here to speak on behalf of Swain County and their SRRO program also. Their SRRO program is underneath the sheriff's office. I believe here in the state, there's 96, 96 agencies that's under the opinion of the sheriff's office or the local municipal, such as Muti PD or Safe PD, I have to present. So I'm going to turn it over to Cody, who I can give you a short presentation.
So Sheriff's Officer, Cody George, I'm just going to take that, yeah, sure. Graduated from Rossburg High School in 2000, Chalk County College 2010, Associates and Sons. Again, I'll ambush the career in 2000, but I haven't got anyone in the sheriff's office that's stayed in for 2018. Worked with Cherokee Union Police Department for one year, then came onboard in 2019 as an SRRO. I was SRRO to high school for one year, under Chief Deathknot, and then went to get through well. Deathknot, I looked over at her sheet for three years, go through high school until December of 22, without going back into the country. A lot of my presentation awards already heard, and we'll get it out to the public all seven. And I'm currently Chief Deputy, I hold a working on advanced law enforcement certification of North Carolina criminal justice standards training division, and working on sheriff's Speaking of the office sheriff, the sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer of the county. The sheriff has jurisdictions throughout the entire county. Grand County Sheriff's Office is the main law enforcement agency in Grand County, which currently has 23 sworn deputies and 15 police officers. Talking about today, everybody's talking about the school resource officer or the SRRO. So what is the definition of the school resource officer? To find, is any law enforcement officer assigned to one or more public school within the local school administration, as defined in TS 115, 105, 506, who works in the school at least 20 hours per week, for more than 12 weeks per calendar year, to assist with all the problems. School safety, school security, emergency preparedness, emergency response, and any additional responsibility related to school safety, risk period, signed by the official coordinator, by the official academic school resource officer. SRRO certifications, they must hold the general certification for either North Carolina criminal justice standards training division or North Carolina sheriff's standards training division. They must have been in North Carolina, North Carolina justice and version of basic school resource officer training, first year being placed on the Mississippi Road, and it must take a minimum of one hour in such a place. So I know a lot of the questions out in the public is, it goes to the sheriff's office, there'll be a different person down here every day, and that is truly not the case. By statute, you cannot put anybody down here for an extended period of time without sending them to get trained. So I want to clarify on that. Talking about facts, on the four counties of North Carolina, utilize company police or campus police for SRROs, that being Grand County, Cherokee County, Moore County, and April Mary County, the other nine states, utilize the local sheriff's office to work over the necessary police department. Going over the definition of company for this. County police officers are the performance of their duties, that performance have the same powers as the municipal and county police officers to make arrests for both families and misdemeanors, and to charge for infractions on any of the fall. Real property owned by or in possession and control of their property, which would be the case of Grand County State. So as a company police officer, your jurisdiction is limited to the property of Grand County State. Once you cross the bridge, the jurisdiction powers is gone. So North Carolina Administrative Code, 12 NCA 02110304, as the PIB Act lists. Some of these prohibitive acts are very important to county police. One of them being, they cannot operate blue lights or sirens off of school property or off of company property. That's a pretty big problem. So if you're an SRRO here at this campus, you have emergency problems to them, and by law, you cannot operate blue lights and sirens to respond to that. So we'll go over a couple scenarios, have an angry parent comes on school grounds and creates problems with teachers and staff. This scenario would be in territorial boundaries, where the police officer can enforce the law. Scenario two, if the same angry parent falls on school bus and has to pay a maintenance to make their way onto the school bus, when it stops, consulting with all the riders, county police has no jurisdiction, that's all school. Again, going back to operating blue lights and sirens on school property, again, this scenario, emergency, and this is going to happen with my society. Issues of government police force, jurisdiction that I went over, potential conflicts of interest, company police may prioritize the interest of corporations over public safety, training and accountability, legal limitations that I went over. In all this, I went over in the first quarter, and so I'm going to go back into the benefits of putting SRROs under the Grand County Sheriff's Office. Putting SRROs under the Grand County Sheriff's Office of streamline communication between Grand County schools and Grand County Sheriff's Office. In the past, for the most part, we have communicated. There are some instances, I feel like communication can be better on both ends. Making the same streamlined, streamlined stronger. Streamline training, 20 Grand County Sheriff's Office and our SRRO, we can all train together, we can all be on the same page, we can do everything together. As sheriff, it would guarantee mark patrol cars on campus. It's proven fact that mark patrol cars on campus is a currency to determine life union. Streamline important access law enforcement reporting software. That's a big issue, and I understand it. When I was here, we worked in the southern software, and I understand the cost of southern software is very high, but it's a very important tool, law enforcement agencies that have a law enforcement agency reporting software. It eliminates the cost of company police annual fees and liability insurance fees and overall liability on Grand County school. It eliminates the issues and jurisdiction on statutory wins, as I already went over. It provides the manpower and resources to fill in when SRROs are not available for So if we got an SRRO sick one day, for that day, I can have a program come off the road and fill in on this school for that SRRO for that day. They just can't be long term, so that makes sense. The whole key to this, if it does happen, is near and around the brothers. And speaking of what that would be exactly right now, because that's something that went to the sheriff's office, we sit down at round table and discuss, and go over some key points. Now, we'll go over some of the key points. The purpose of MOU would be to formalize the relationship between Grand County schools and Grand County Sheriff's Office in order to foster an efficient and cohesive program to rebuild a positive relationship between law enforcement and the youth of our county, with a goal of reducing crime committed by giving us. Few key points of MOU would be to follow the supervision. We've sat down and discussed who the supervision of the SRROs will be. We work directly with Grand County, SRROs work directly with Grand County Sheriff's Office, work directly with state school director and principals to ensure all safety concerns and student safety are addressed efficiently and in time with manner. Daily assignments, the bid to dress, change of commission to be addressed. Duty hours, complete time, trainings and briefings, selection procedures. In the MOU, selection procedures, we'd set out and figure out the selection procedures of SRROs on campus. We would want Grand County schools in the selection group to be put over here if that was the case. So I don't want everybody to feel like it's, we're going to put whoever we want. The selection procedure, we'll set down, tell them what we put on the MOU, so how this all works. And as the sheriff has spoken before, we have, Josh has a job with this chair, I mean, it's not, it's not like we're looking to get rid of him. Other key points are duties and responsibilities, enforcement of arrest procedures, interview procedures, search procedure procedures, school rule violation slash discipline. Again, we're just looking to make things better jurisdictionally and statuteually, make that streamline, make sure we're all engaged, fit together. But at the end of the day, we have to communicate with each other, whichever way this goes. And I want everybody to understand that. I worked in schools for four years, building relationships with students, probably, that don't matter if you're in this school or if you're outside here on the street, building relationships with our kids, it will probably be the same. And whichever way this goes, we have to work together, isn't it? So in closing, I'll say Grand County schools, not having manpower, resources, well, embedded in, back to the definition of the form of jobs, it's just for a kid, and you're not releasing victims.
I'm Attorney Scott Griffin, Sheriff of Grand County, I'm at the State Honoring, serving the people of Grand County since 2006, as a sheriff. When I came into office in 2006, the SRRO, I was already a sheriff's number, but we just continued that on through a lot of, and I'm not, I'm not here to try to say you, but I'll say on the program, on the test on page, what we do in Grand County. I have five SRROs, I have one at the high school, one at the middle school, one at ETLN school, I have one that's close between the charter school and Head Start School. And three of those are paid by state grant, state school grants, they pay $44,000 a year to give the match, but the county has to match $11,000 per SRRO. The SRRO program in Swain County, I have two of them, SRROs, and are fire certified, they can teach the fire program. One of them is a general instructor as well as a firearm instructor, that has not permitted to be here in our insurance, we have to have insurance annually as well as qualifications with any type of weapon that they carry, and that SRRO can help with that. I have other general and firearms instructors, they work hand in hand, making sure that everybody is qualified and meets the state standards to be able to be a deputy. Until recently, first 2023, I along with 99 other sheriffs in the state, have hired anybody off the street to give them guns and bags, and a card, and go to work. That all changed, now anybody that comes to work for the sheriff's office, whether it be a deputy, SRRO, whatever it may be, has to be certified with the BLDT certification, basic law enforcement training certification, before you can even offer them a additional officer deployment. There's extensive, intensely, very intensive background shares, that go along with employment for any deputy or SRRO officer that, that, that the sheriff's office may employ, along with psychological evaluation. All these people are vetted very well, that, that work on the mountain well, so we make sure they're very well qualified for the job. We don't go to the school, try to run anything over the school, we work hand in hand with super attendants and the principal of each school, to make sure we're delivering the service that they need and require. And it's worked out very well for us and students, and they seem to be very well pleased, I don't hear no, no complaints from them. Again, I'm not, I'm not here to try to say you on SRRO being on the county, sheriff's office, I'm relatively telling you how well it works for us in Swain County. And I wouldn't have it any other way, the office in Swain County. Again, it's worked very well, we can use those SRRO officers for additional patrol during spring break, when the schools are shut down. Some of these officers are even certified in detention, so we could use them in detention also. So it's a very big help to us to have those SRRO officers under my umbrella. If school needs additional manpower for ball games or other activities, then that's something that, that helps me work out between the school and sheriff and the county as far as I can, we've got that work out in our county, and it works very well. Our SRRO officers are very well pleased, they love being SRRO officers. I've offered every one of them, attached office from SRRO, to be a deputy on the road, and they said no, and we'll quit first before we leave those kids. They get attached to the kids, they know the kids, and if they know a lot of problems, they can identify a lot of problems. And they can bring, if they're under the sheriff's umbrella, they can bring that to the sheriff, and the sheriff has lots of investigative powers, tools, that's what Powers, tools, a lot of other agencies don't have, work closely with DSS. Children that may need some extra assistance to help with DSS. And they're, they're trained to identify a lot of those things. A lot of these kids will come to an SRO and start telling them the problem. That they won't tell anybody else, they'll talk to an SRO and probably stop a lot of abuse, neglect, kids. Again, it works very well with us, we have, I have investigators that, I have two of them that work nothing but child cases. Sexual cases, abuse, and other things like that. And a lot of those cases come back through those investigators through the SRO. Bringing those problems to them because these kids got told them about. But if you all would like to come over anytime, any of you, or like to see how we do our programs, you're welcome, we'd be glad to have you. We can't, I can't say here and say we've done everything perfect, but we've got a pretty good program. Flag County works out very well, we've got lockdown, we've had bomb threat, we've had gun threat. And when that happens, when the SRO calls lockdown or a teacher calls lockdown, it doesn't have to be an SRO. If anybody calls lockdown and everybody we've got in front of that school will need it. And we're gonna, we're gonna shut that school down, we're gonna form a perimeter. And we're gonna try to get to the bottom of the problem, whatever it may be, and take care of that problem. And again, our SROs, I'm glad to have them working, adding additional resources, training, additional training. Uh, there's a lot of responsibility that goes along with them, SROs. And they need all the training they, they need to stay on top of the state standards and state law. But again, any of you would like to come to Flag County, you can just let me know, we'd be glad to give you a tour of the school, let you talk with SROs. And get your, thank you very much.
Evening, everybody. Name is David Weacher. I am the attorney for the office of sheriff in Grand County. Been the attorney for the office of sheriff in Cherokee County. I am currently the office of sheriff, attorney for Clay County, Yancey County, and Avery County. I've listened with absolute respect to everything that everyone has said this evening, especially Mr. Caringer. I respect the fact that there is white folks used to do business. I'm the guy you see when things go wrong. I'm the guy you see when there are dead children, I'm the guy you see with teachers. I'm the guy you see when you're shocked with yourselves, yourselves. I teach officer involved shootings to the sheriff's attorneys and police attorneys. I'll be teaching now, about two weeks in Wilmington. I deal with critical incidents, as this testicle is, is. Every school in the United States is a target. Mentally ill adults, disturbed children, or folks in the community just have an accident. I asked the sheriff, what do you want to talk, what do you want to be to talk to y'all about today? I respect the fact that Grand County has a condition in the way of business. Where they have a problem police or a problem law enforcement group, then the SRO program here in Grand County, and that's insufficient. I had a good friend of mine who was the sheriff in Clay County. He was the sheriff for a few weeks, a couple of months, called me one night. He had a young man from Clay County that was in Cherokee County that had named bullets. That he was going to use to kill students and teachers at the Andrews Murphy football game. And we ended up bringing multiple SWAT teams. We ended up catching that young man, and he ended up wanting to shoot at that school. Lawsuits and money don't matter, in case, you know, I say, JJ, I'm the guy, y'all don't throw anything. The suit Cherokee County for about sixty million dollars because their board filled out with Department of Social Services. And to hear the chairman of their board of commissioners, one of their commissioners, tell them, that's the reason you have insurance. They can do whatever they want, people put them there. They're the voice of the people, they're the voice of the people until they violated constitutional rights, didn't follow the law, broke the law. Kids got hurt, kids got raped, kids got injured. And then we ended up in federal court in Asheville. Jury came back with a four point five million dollar verdict from the county, so it was about fifty million. I'm that guy, I'm the guy that shows up on dark days. And that happened in Cherokee County, it didn't happen in Raleigh, it didn't happen in Charlotte, it didn't happen in Wilmington, it happened over there, one county over. I can tell you, I'm here when bad things happen. I can tell you that the county commissioners can be, the, the school board can be held personally liable for constitutional right violations. I can tell you this world is very complex. I can tell you that there's a United States federal code called nineteen eighty-three. And it deals with what happens when procedural and sensitive due process and constitutional rights of kids are violated, teachers are violated, employees are violated. And it gets real messy, real fast. I can tell you what happens when school boards and school administration make political choices and so legal choices. And some kid ends up coming to school and stabbing another kid, shooting another kid, beating a school teacher. And then all of a sudden, you end up in Asheville for three to five years in federal court and lose. And then they come to you and they're raising property taxes thirty percent like they did in Cherokee County. I'm the guy that shows up when things go wrong. And I apologize for being here tonight, a tremendous amount of respect of Sheriff Cochran when he talks about being able to help children. And it's a complex problem when kids end up coming in, talking about their parents having drug addiction problems, domestic violence, domestic, the problems that come across state lines, then you go talk to an SRO. And then SRO can immediately contact the office of the sheriff, Department of Social Services. And they can bring to bear multiple processes, help that child, protect the school, to help teachers. I think Sheriff Cochran, in particular, he said it best, there's ninety-six municipalities out of a hundred. That already used the sheriff's office, SRO program. I don't mean to be condescending and disrespectful to anyone on the board. But we're not a sheriff's department, we're an office of the sheriff, we're a constitutionally created office under the North Carolina Constitution. The North Carolina Constitution gives the people of the county a brand to elect their sheriff. And to empower him to look after women, children, and adults of this count. There are a tremendous amount of resources that also sheriff has. The office of the sheriff goes back to twelve hundreds, out of Europe, England, France. It's not a department, it's not a department under the county, it's not a department under the school board, it's an office of the sheriff. And it's an extension of Brad Hoggit, and it's an extension of Curtis Cochran, it's an extension of every sheriff in the state of North Carolina. And if you don't think those men don't sleep well, I trust you. They worry about getting that call in the middle of the night, they get that call early morning, they get that call that somebody's going to come, hurt somebody and can't protect themselves. There's a constitutional process, forty-two USC nineteen eighty-three. Province school board wants to know that, they want to talk to their school board attorney. That's where they can be held personally liable if they fail to discharge their duties. In today's world, where we have school shootings, where you have Amish community in Pennsylvania. Where you have the head of the house, the head of the state police pull up the door with his SUV and they see three years old, twelve years old, all shot with a school shooter in there, and the teacher shot. Now, we've got some strange people that live in Western Kentucky. We have strange people there too, we have mentally ill people. In Haywood County, we stopped a kid that was walking to a school with a satchel with multiple guns. We had another kid in Haywood County that had gotten off the internet plan to put ball bearings and nails in paint cans. He pulled the fire alarm. And because of the program, Tom, for the SRO program, he knew where all the kids were going to get staged. So he had put those ball bearing cans around the garbage cans where all the kids were taken out of school. Now, Haywood County has an SRO, that was before them. We need law enforcement to keep our children safe. A bad day for me is a dead child, a bad day for me is a dead family, a bad day for all of us. Is when you're trying to get to your school because there's been a school shooting, you don't want that. We can help you stop that, we can't promise it won't happen. We can't promise with a hundred percent certainty that we can guarantee a hundred percent safety. But I can promise you this, on behalf of Sheriff Hoggins and Sheriff Cochran, will die charming. Only thing that stops that man with a gun is one shot, is a good man, that's one way to act. Sheriff Hoggins is a good man, you need to let Sheriff Hoggins do his job.
Now we have Tommy and Mr. Grand County students. Good morning, how are y'all? Y'all new to the streets, break in, or y'all ready to keep it on the road? Good joke. Uh, my name is Robert Bailey, I'm the safe schools director for Grand County schools. I'm the guy responsible for keeping your children safe and our staff safe on campus. And SROs that we have now enter direct to state. And so, hey, if there's anything, that is my primary job. First, I want to thank you for coming out tonight and supporting the kids, that's the bottom line, is keep them safe. If you just turn on the news, look on social media, there is a war raging against our children right now. About what they should be, who they should look like, everything. So we're here to protect them at all costs possible, that's our first and foremost desire. Second, I, I, I want to thank the sheriff's office for coming, I want to appreciate, appreciate that. Hoggins, Cody, we worked together several years back there, we've had good times together. I know all the officers here, I got to with them, and I think I actually taught happy, right? Boys, say, yeah, watch the second hand, it's seven pence, it's just hope it's less than the eight drags, so, so I appreciate y'all. Y'all, as a society, is, could you imagine what it would be like if we went without law enforcement for just one week? What would happen? Now imagine what the things they do when they get attacked on the other side by the police or whatever, because people don't want to be held accountable. So they do a dangerous job, I appreciate it, I think we work well together. And now, we may have a difference of opinion on what to do with SROs tonight. I, I tell you right now, I promise, Grand, Cody, whatever happens, we'll still, South City will want every Kansas kid to get safe. I think y'all will too, so that's, that's just part of life. First Corinthians fourteen thirty-three states for God is not the author of the fusion, but of peace. Uh, here lately, there seems to be a lot of confusion, which has led to a lot of division, that I, I just wish there wasn't, that wasn't the case. Uh, bottom line is, I'm eating at the last door leak, and I'll double down again, I still think we need to be in a room, closed environment. Sheriff's office, the schools, personnel, county commissioner, parents, and, you know, government agencies that want to attend. And let's sit down and do a side of cash out, what is the best possible way to keep our kids safe? Now, my opinion again is, I think the best case scenario is to keep the SROs like it is and then have sheriff's office add to that. And, and we even, and we even have a grant, we could have paid for that next year, at least happen. Now, that's my opinion, and I'll let you know that upfront. But again, I respect the wishes of our board, we're a governing agency of our school system. Uh, unfortunately, situation now is almost like a divorce, it don't matter who's right or wrong, it sucks. It's the kids unless we can try to figure out something to, to, to help ease that burden. What scares me the most is, and again, I'll go back to having a closed meeting, is that having this meeting here in an open public session on live feed that's uploaded and put on the web. Regardless of what we do now, or what we do in the future, whether it's us or the sheriff's office, anybody, everybody can look that up. Which puts at danger the protocols we have in place to keep our kids safe. Because really safe and secretly, really go hand in hand with our main school kids. But anyway, uh, less than a month ago, uh, there was no issues, complaints, concerns, or problems that would drop to my attention as far as how we keep our children safe. And how we use our SROs. Yet now, here we are. Uh, in short, the sheriff's office and the jurisdictions of the SROs under him, and use school money to pay for. And who are one of our, our PRC's. Which again, I'd still like for us all to work together to create a grant to add two SROs, just not keep the same that we have. Uh, I've got several questions, you know, even if the school ends up paying for the salaries and benefits, you know, where's the money going to come from for vehicles, gas, guns, ammunition, training and other equipment? Uh, if the SROs will, they will not be reported by the school, but they'll be the county's employees. So if, what if there's a new sheriff or new county commissioners, they decide not to fund, hire, or keep the SROs like it is, that can change every two to four years. Uh, what about the chain of command, who's going to be, who's going to be in charge? School, the sheriff, or the commissioner? Like I always do, I have plenty of questions that could have been answered and sit down face to face instead of a public board meeting. I want what everybody else wants in this room, and it's what is the best way to protect our children while they're at school? And I'm sorry, the answer to that question is not going to be found on Facebook. I don't, I don't answer the Facebook fodder, I don't look at it, I steal the facts. I don't have the facts, I'll tell you it's fun, I don't have it, but I'll, I'll find that, everybody knows, and he knows that. And yes, most of the schools are under the jurisdiction of the sheriff. Every safe schools conference we've been to in the past ten years involving all types of SROs. Same, was the same thing, and we get the same response, if they wish their school, the SRO program to run like ours. Because most of the training we receive there, we find our school is already implemented, and we are having to cover. And, and a lot of us too, out of Grand County, had a lot to do with that, as long as none of the SROs. We're trying to continually do better, get better to save our kids, to make them safe as possible. Uh, Pete divided earlier about what constitutes an SRO, and he's absolutely true. Uh, twenty hours a week, over twelve weeks is what constitutes it, and that's, that's the minimum. But just to let you know, our SROs work a minimum of forty-two and a half hours a week just to be on campus. When you add ball games and code, extracurricular activities to that, they go up to fifty-five, sixty hours a week. So it is a full-time, more than a full-time job. Again, I want to deal on the backs, and everyone here along with them, they're apparently know that, oh, who wants the best interest of the kid? Now, and I will say something about jurisdiction, they made a very good point about, about having jurisdiction on campus. Okay, I, it's a very good argument point, I can't argue against it, I mean, from a very light, it's, it's not bad, but when it comes to jurisdiction personally, again, this is Robert Bailey, my idea. I don't want the SROs to have jurisdiction to have some of those little kids. And again, I know they're going to disagree with it, that's fine, I love them anyway, love you guys, but if But if the world is burning down outside, that we still don't want somebody here to protect our kids at all times. And that, that's smart, okay? And now we bring that Cody minute, not, not having our cars marked. That is my fault. And that's a very good thing he said, that it is a term when cars are marked outside. And uh, even though I've got an excuse for it, that we're trying to wait on a different vehicle and I was waiting on it, that's promised to us a couple of months ago. To do both of them at the same time. It still has not arrived. And still no excuse for me not to go ahead and mark those cars. So he is right about that and I appreciate that about him. So uh, I don't do social media, but anyone is welcome to talk to me anytime. School, my phone, at my house, I live in the middle of town. And I'll do whatever I can to help anybody as long as the student's best interest at heart. I don't do social media. If you're gonna message me, I'm not gonna retard it. If somebody says, take a screenshot and then text it to you. Okay? So just keep that in mind. So, dealing with backs, I'm gonna get into some SROs. You don't even hear a word from me, but I want you to understand who our SROs are and what their jobs are. So the first one will be Josh Reed is an SRO elementary school and Jeff Knight is our SRO at Mill Castle. Thank you for your time and go with us.
Good day. My name is Josh Reed and I'm the SRO at Reed's School. First off, I want to say we are law enforcement. One hundred percent. We can make our own charters. We can do everything the Sheriff Hogs can do. All I'm doing is, is the, it's, it's. There was a situation that happened at the school. Cody touched on it a little bit about people that he searched. Stuff home, company's own school project. Brad may be chief at the last board meeting. Chad, they just called me and they have a situation. That is a very serious fault. We had a situation here. No laws were broken. It was all policy violations. There weren't going to be on school grounds for the eight hours. So I feel that it was Tommy Curtis to bring him here to kill me in the fourth floor. So I did it. There was never a threat to regular to the school, shooting, bombing, nothing. That was never the case. And if anybody wants to review that, if you don't come by my office, I'll show you the facts. Again, it's the post that was put on Facebook about what we can't indicate. One of the scenarios was if a, a student or individual driving reckless, being on campus. We tried to stop them. They refused to stop, but we had to stop at the school property. We couldn't sue them either. The second is about an angry parent coming to school and then uh, following school bus, getting on the school bus. Causing injury to the bus drivers or riders. Chapter seventy-four E was brought up by Sheriff Hogs. So, they just brought up different things. So I'm gonna give you the subject. Seventy-four E dash six, subjects received. All company police, company police officers while in performance of their duties, of employees have the same powers as a district and county police officer to make arrests for both felonies and misdemeanors and to charge them for actions on any of the following. Real property owned by or in possession and control of the area. Real property owned by possession and control of a person who has contracted with the employee or provided on-site company security, personal services for the property. Any other real property while in continuous or immediate pursuit of a person for offense committed upon the property. Strive and subjects one virtue of the subject. Definitely real property. Real property is land and other assets that are permanently attached to it. These other assets must be permanently placed on or under the land. Examples of real property are buildings, canals, crops, fences, plant, landscaping, machinery, minerals, ponds, railroad tracks, tow trucks. With your turn, if somebody gets on the school bus, causes harm to somebody, that is property, land and a control of the school. We have jurisdiction to it. If somebody commits a crime on school grounds and wants to run, we have authority, we can pursue them off the school route. Jurisdiction is off. But I wasn't gonna say anything, but I feel that I needed to justify some of the non-truths that were spoken. Trying to make us look bad as Sheriff's Office to work.
Good day to everybody. Well, that's something too, what uh, what Josh just spoke over there. Um, after this and the, the question there, uh, shortly after that, we, we had a sit-down. Several parties involved, school was there, school administration's there, SROs were there, Sheriff's Offices and the, the roads and stuff. One took it as far as they could take it, they handed it off to the next and the next. So, that's how it should. Josh did an excellent job with working that particular incident. He gathered all, all the information that you and the SPI, you know, committed him on. And he presented that information to Sheriff's Office, Van Town, uh, inform magistrate. And shortly thereafter, uh, contacted the SPI. Uh, SPI came to our, uh, school and I'll leave it at that. That's, that was, that's, that's how it should. Nobody will regret it. Nobody will put the pat on the back. That's how it should run. Uh, everybody, that particular day, I thought did a fantastic job. And that's how, in my mind, it should, should work. So, getting back to, to, to my part today, my name's Jeff Knight. I'm closing in on twenty-five years of law enforcement. Twenty-one of those uh, as an SRO with Graham County Schools. Uh, I've seen a lot of changes during that time, uh, both from a county standpoint as well as a school standpoint. Uh, I've gotten various certifications, uh, distinguished service award, just to, to, uh, professional strategic, I've got to meet on the, the, the bench. But today is not about equal. Today is about our kids and what's best for our peers. And we've always had a great working relationship with our local agencies, whether it be the Sheriff's Office or whether it be our trauma. We've always had great working relationships with them. But Mr. Carringer, I will tell you, um, I've known Mr. Carringer for quite a long time. My name is, he was principal when I first read him at the elementary school. We did have sheriff one time before, uh, just crossed the line. There was one of those SROs, two of our sheriff's officers. But unlike this particular time, that sheriff actually came to vote today and demonstrate his presence at the SRO at the high school at the time. And just simply sat down and asked us, what do you think? How do you think it'll work? I didn't get that from Steve. I didn't get that from Steve. All those guys standing in the back, on both sides of the room, these guys sitting down here, I know the most approachable people that it's on the front of the head. They wear the same badge. They might say something different, but they wear the same badge. I guarantee you, if I put out a call, any of these guys would come in and make an expected sign of you. Right? I, I don't agree with how this was handled. Um, when I first started getting wind of this was, um, well, it was made public. I asked one of the officers about, what's going on? And the officer seemed to say that he was approached by a board and took a look at his face and said, you know, it's stupid. That's how I heard about, heard about it, or, or shoot it, one hundred percent. No, hey, Jeff Knight, we need to sit down. There's maybe some things we can do better. I've worked great with these guys, all these guys at Sheriff's Office. I've worked great with them. It is, it's a shame because we don't want it this way. We've been not made a division in our midst between us. This shouldn't have come to this. This should have been a phone call. This should have been a visit. Say, hey, let's sit down, let's, let's figure out what, what works best for everybody. If you can help us provide better coverage for these kids, we take something. Josh, sure, I need a reward when we said no. We're always looking for better ways to protect and serve not just the kids of Graham County, but our faculty and staff too. Because a lot of the, a lot of times when a lot of people don't see, these kids come in situations they go. And you go a step further and you don't see the teachers and what they do for these kids. You don't see them reaching for their own pockets and paying for clothes, paying for food. Giving them that little bit extra time to make sure that they can successfully complete that, that, that particular, uh, lesson. We get to see them. We get to feel them. Now, there's lots to talk about. So let's dive right into it. That was just my entry. Last board meeting, one of the things that was, was uh, uh, the Sheriff Hogs, is there's an increased presence in all of our schools. Kind of three times since Thanksgiving. Two of those were within the past week. Okay? Uh, that's not count. Hang on a minute. They come, they come once a while. That does not count the times that I have seen them sort of through our departments because I have seen them. Okay? Mr. Moody, I think touched on this earlier, as far as coverage goes, we do have two officers on the, uh, staff right now. Whenever I came back last year, I was, I was immediately asking, what about adding third SRO? I knew there was a grand cycle out. But when I was asking, we was kind of in the middle of this grand cycle. So we had to wait till this year. And it is my understanding that the school was wanting that third SRO position. That way, if Josh or myself has to be out sick one day, one of us can go to that, over to the house and use all of his coverage. Um, Cody, uh, George mentioned earlier about the report system. I, 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 I couldn't agree with you more. I couldn't agree with you more. It would be nice if we could do our reports, but then when they go to pull it up, all that information would be ready. You guys are still, you're still gonna do some software, correct? Hey, I consulted his offer and had the extended security force. What did we take for two people? Thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And that's for less than two reports a year, I would dare say. And I, I'm saying that from my past experience and as well as this year and part of the school year last year. That's a lot of money. But now, if there's money out there that you get that, absolutely. I know I'd researched this how I could and said I'd researched this years ago. Soon as I saw that, I thought, oh, that's a catch. That's astronomical. There's a way we can shave a little bit of that money off, cut that from two users down to one, but you're still, you're still looking. Seven, seven, several dollars. Mark patrol cars. And again, if somebody would have just came to me. That's all I'm telling you. I agree, park patrol cars sitting front school, school staff, express. So that's somebody that isn't in the, know that there's a place also to have that school. Have emails dating back to August of last year. I have work from that same time period for our more people. Sheriff Hogs touched on this in the, in our school board meeting, that uh, whenever I came back, the state of McCall, I started requiring all SROs to take one additional hour of school resource officer training in addition to already, uh, required in SROs hours. That was started after I left in December twenty-one, twenty-two. So in turn, I had to go back and get my certification. For that period of time, we could not drive a vehicle that resembled a police car. We had to strip it down to just bare bones vehicle. It could not be a police vehicle. I got my certification, then we had to do the same with Josh's. So you see two brave explorers sitting out there? That's fine. Then once we got, this got certified, funding issue. The funds just didn't, wasn't there at the time. And then Mr. Moody touched on it, uh, at the end of his, uh, wedding, we generally get the vehicle that's handed out from central office. They have to go with our family. So that is why we do not have more vehicles. Those vehicles, I was, I would think we'd get that at the some or whereabouts of those vehicles putting more, so it's, if not some. One of the reasons that uh, Sheriff Hogs, and I appreciate you coming out, I get several of your guys, they come over to work ball games with us. Good guys. Super good guys. I appreciate it. They were most helpful, uh, whenever we played with guys. Uh, but I'm gonna speak with my personal experience. Uh, your guys may have a totally different experience, but this is my personal experience. That, uh, there was, there was one year, whenever in my first few years of my spending SRO, I would work summers for the Sheriff's Office. Whenever I had to answer a call, every once in a while, I would have to go to a house that had one of my kids in it. In my elementary school. You go ahead and hit the reset button, any trust that you've ever built with that kid. Any trust you ever built with that kid, with his buddies, anybody that associates with him, because they go back to school and guess what? Guess what Officer Knott did? He comes to my house last night, he rested mine. That's how, that's personal experience. So reset the button. And once I saw what was going on there, I was like, I can't, I can't do that if I want to keep this relationship as kids. And if I want to build that trust. Not giving some, some, some department to credit. Okay, we're relative to small community and like everybody. This coming year, this coming school year, if we are voted to, uh, for the board votes to keep the system as is, Josh will be coming back to the classroom this year. We're going to be teaching forever budget classes. Josh was already signed up for one this summer and because of these proceedings, we had to put that on hold as a result. I didn't, I didn't even register because our future is right now, we're going to do it. Our futures are being set. I'm not going to talk about emergency procedures. I would talk about that in closed room. Because this has been live stream and I will not talk about our emergency procedures. Other than the fact that we have had over ten weeks to prepare matches and take this. Can we do things better? I'm sure, I'm sure there's things that we didn't work on and we could do better. That's why whenever we, we have these things, I tell people, I say, big red, red, red kids, we don't have, we don't have them scared around here. Tell us what we're doing wrong so we can make it better. One of, one of the biggest reasons that I think our school, our police, police agency benefits not only our kids, but faculty, is this is how it works. With the sheriff's office, they got, they got a technical responsibility that sheriff's office. They get a call on Sunday branch, you know, does anybody know how far Sunday branch is from town? Running emergency traffic gets forty-two, forty-five minutes. They've got a huge responsibility. They get a call over on twenty-eight towards St. Paul, they got instructions on it. They've got a huge, huge responsibility already. Josh and I have got this first. We've got, you know, I, I don't know, I can't think of a time where I've never picked up a phone, called any one of these guys because I've seen them. And they don't give a word, they don't want to come here. Or if they've asked me for information regarding a student, they can really go for somebody. That's how it works. Because all, we, we, we believe the same thing. That's hard. And I was one of those guys, I'm going to stay here. And I'll work it. I don't need this to balance. I don't need that. Well, I've been in SRO at Dolphins Field. I would say it's mostly at the elementary school, but I started back over here across from the middle school. Last school year, the half, half year. I've seen some of the best forested kids. One of the coolest things that, that I've seen is whenever I've had kids in elementary school, that was on that fence. It maybe had a parent that was drug addicts, or maybe had a parent that had kicked them out, or maybe had a parent that had put them in foster care. And then they come back twenty years later. And they said, Mr. Knott, I appreciate it. I said, you know, twenty years later, I appreciate what? You know, I remember the kid, but they're all grown up. And then you, just the little stories, and this is not just me, you didn't give up on them. And I can say that for many, every teacher and every staff member, pre-k through twelve in the school. And I'd say that to all these guys standing there, bags on their chest. But there's something about working at school, it didn't help at all. I've seen a lot of victories with kids and unfortunately I've seen a lot of losses. The victories are great, but the losses. The losses you never forget. That's what drives me. Josh, Josh Reed has that same fire in his heart, God. When he closes, I'm going to get off his. I've been up here all night. When he closes, some of these kids, uh, that have come by and said, asked me what they could ever do to thank me for helping talk to me, they're simply sitting and brist. And my, I remember responses that I, that I said more often and more, and I don't remember all the responses I gave to them, but one of the responses that kept coming back to me was when I see you walk across that stage and David Mytherson or anybody, the high school principal gives you that approval. With all the thank you I need, I'll never ask for anything else. Be successful. And win. And I, I thank you for your time, I thank you for hearing us, hoping, hope, pray that you'll leave it as it is. Also hope that the sheriff's office, myself and Josh, Mr. Moody. Sit down and tell yourself something. It's over, dude. Thank you very much.
Uh, Cody George, you want to say something else? I just want to address a few things. First thing is the real property, uh, school bus is not fit because that is the real property of Carolina. So real property that they can build and fix. So the school bus is not fit. But also going back to this again from a couple of weeks ago. Again, whichever way this goes, there has to be some better. Uh, I know this thing was nothing criminal, but there's resources out there that I've made them aware of, to introduce with the SPI. And by a progressive unit, I personally have the boroughs, it needs to be better communication between the two, so that it's one common goal. Whichever way this goes. There's resources and we need to utilize them. One more thing. I'm personally on this campus every single, every single day I'm on, personally, at some point during the day. Most of the time, seven thirty, we want to do five men in this case. I may not be inside the building, but I'm personally on this campus with every speaker.
Okay, public comment period. Uh, we have several people signed up. Uh, let me just tell you that you, uh, limited to three minutes. Uh, we have too many people that are letting them win the loss. Uh, Randy Knight, you're first. Use, use this mic right here, Mr. Knight.
Okay, uh, I guess practically everything has been said because of the spirit here and problem. So if I repeat myself, repeat what someone else says, give me, and I'll be short and brief. Okay, um. I want the SROs to have been doing a good job, an excellent job for a great few years, thanks for your patience. And the grand star, A.
In Mr. Cochran's case, uh, I know Mr. Cochran and family well because he's a pastor. Uh, I understand why that jurisdiction of our blue lines would be important to swing down each county. The campuses are far apart, our campuses are two thousand, we're the last, two thousand being part. That's not a long distance to run blue lines. Although then, uh, all company police also have had the same jurisdictions under the same law, seventy-four, eighty. And if any police officer in the state, they can be given that jurisdiction by mutual aid agreement. All company police agencies that fall across under this chapter may enter mutual aid agreement with governing board of municipality or with the consent of the county sheriff. And down to the same extent as the district police department pursuant to chapter one sixty-eight. So the jurisdiction issue can be solved simply with a mutual aid agreement. That's simple. With the same law that both parties have written. Also, it can be solved without a mutual aid agreement. It can simply ask needed assistance. I'll agree that for sake of time, it's just that I look at the law again, still simple, still simple law. As Mr. Moody stated, uh, I'm not secure for jurisdiction, it's a difference. I think the same thing happens. I think our school resource officer is labeled just as that. A resource officer for the school does not need to be all campus. Uh, in the example that was given about the school bus thing, little property, not real property, whatever. Let's consider that that parent is an angry parent, that a single parent has a history of drugs, alcohol, and violence, and has a child named Little Timmy. Let's say this is on Tuesday after the school, and JB basketball game is already started. The SRO gets a call, and the school comes and stuff Little Timmy's daddy, Red Club SRO. Little Timmy's daddy is behind bars, but what about Little Timmy? He's now long, he's scared, he's going into the SS custody, custody and strength hall. Back to ballgame, that's a fine school, who's covering that now? School resource officer, that's a rough time. Go back to the morning when school's back alive, Little Timmy's back at school now. The other troubles that he had at home, his world's been turned upside down. He's lashing out because that's his only coping mechanism. Now he needs assistance when he gets to school. Who's going to help him? Who's going to help him? The school resource officer, that's his example.
Next up is Jackie Kronk. If I mispronounce you, that's.
I'm just speaking for, I've worked with a lot of children for fourteen years. And we see this day, we see Jack Knight interacting with the kids, the relationships. Those relationships are important, just like with those lunchroom ladies. We see and hear far more than what anybody realizes. So I think it's important that we keep it the way it is and keep the relationships formal like we have it. But all of y'all should be working together. Everybody should be working together. It shouldn't be a power struggle. You're here with kids. Bottom line, these kids. It's not who's right, who's wrong. You should sit down, work together, come up with something that is going to benefit our staff, our kids. Not who's right and who's wrong. You need to put the kids first. Shouldn't be a power struggle, and that's what I think like. Thank you.
Sunny J.
My name is Sunny J, because I've been on halfway exonerating district. Um, there's, thirty, thirty minutes is not a very long time. I have a lot of stuff I want to say, and I'm going to focus on the one that's most important, I think. Um, there's been a lot of talk about communication, communication has to go both ways. Sheriff Cox, remember when you first came in, when you first became sheriff, I came to your office, I made appointment, came to your office, sat down with you and Cody George, and talked to you about Handle of Care. For those of y'all that know, Handle of Care is a nationwide program between a school and a sheriff's department. And it is a simple phone call or email to the school by the sheriff department. If they get any calls out the previous day that involved one of our children. They don't have to tell us what happened, they probably can. But all they do is pick up the phone and say, Little Timmy's dad got arrested last night. And when I get that explanation, I turn around and I email the teachers that Little Timmy has. And I say, Little Timmy needs to be handled with care today. He may not have his book back, he may not have eaten breakfast, he may have the same clothes he had on yesterday. Please show them some extra grace and give him a hand. And Sheriff Cox, it says to me, uh, I don't know if we're going to have time to do that, but we'll look at it again. So that is not good communication. The other thing, I, I don't, the other thing I don't make sure that I get to say is that one of the things in the paper said that change has happened all the time and that children are good with change. And that is right. We say all the time that our children are so resilient, oh, they're so resilient. They shouldn't have to be resurfacing. This is why, this is needed for our school, for our children. It is unnecessary.
I'm Bobby Lee. I'm a parent and grandparent. I've had kids go through this school. They had to play with arms, sports. And I don't understand why they want to change something that works. If it works, it don't need to be, don't fix it. Keep it going. But what I will say, the sheriff was elected. And he may not get elected again. I don't know, you don't know. But this thing is going to change again. But you know, if our resource officers need a backup and they call, the sheriff department needs to back them up. Bottom line, our kids are gifted by God. And I pray for them every day. And I know we're living in a time of drugs, alcohol, and, and debt. But these being here are doing the best job that they can for what they have. But they need to keep doing what they're doing. But these being here are doing the best job that they can for what they have, but they need to keep doing what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. William Watt.
My name is William Watt, I work at school. Previous to working at school, I worked for the state department for seven years. I was a sergeant on my way to the team. Though, the only issue that I'm seeing that we're having is communication. I feel that the resource officers we have have established themselves and need to remain with kids. But I also feel that, in extension of that, talking on what Robert Moody said, is a chain of community. When things escalate, there needs to be a chain of community go through and to include other resources. We had that at the pressure I worked, and it worked well. I feel that we should keep what we have here already, but include an officer from the sheriff's department. And I think that would resolve what people are concerned about losing, what we already had, and include the other resources that we could use.
Thank you, Mr. Watt. Carissa Robbins.
Um, I have a lot of things that I wanted to say, and a lot of people have addressed this stuff already. So I'm not gonna say I'm thrown one way or the other. But I will tell you, I'm a leader, I've been working criminal justice for about fifteen years. Being a parent is harder than any other duty, and I think that's it. I feel like both agencies that are involved in this, they have the same ideas, the same common vote, they love our kids. I know that everybody here is trying to do what they feel is best for our children. I would like to address the fact that since this first board meeting, I've had parents who've reached out to me. And I think that there's not only a disconnect in the agencies, but the process of how things are going in front of them, their time, to teach, to principal. It should not be difficult for a parent to get in touch with somebody concerned with safety. So I feel like we have some people who do not understand the public safety aspect of our kids' safety, or personal situations that they reported, that needs to be passed on. I think that's something that needs to be addressed. I also feel like we elected our board to do the job, and if anybody had a problem with how our services were operating, it should have been something we sat down at the table with, we discussed, that's what we elected to do. And I feel like when things are done without the public note, or being thrown in someone's face, or just let's decide right now, it causes distrust. That's why this room's full of people. When we distrust our government, or our board, or people that we elected to do the job because things go wrong in the shadows, it might suspect them some way. So I think maybe if this was addressed in the right way, there might be, there might not be a concern here for people. The way I feel about this situation in my mind, it revolves around what we've been during that year. Unfortunately, nobody in here or out there is gonna know what that, what entails in that, in that, because that's something to be done, that's a fact. If there's a breakdown in communication, between the sheriff's office, from the school, my child, everybody else here, their child deserves that. It doesn't matter who wants to be in charge, or who wants to do what, it's something that you sit down, you decide together for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Crystal White.
So, good evening, I'm Crystal White, I teach math at Rockville High School, and I'm the coach for Rockville, Illinois, and Orange County. I'm the president of the Graham Peony Chapter of the Association, North Carolina Association of Educators. I've been in public education for twenty-eight years. After meeting with Superintendent Knight, Sheriff Hoxit, and Officer George, and gathering information from our staff at both three schools. I can say that the majority of teachers feel that good communication would have kept this issue from becoming what it is now. Before an issue is brought up by the school board that directly affects the classroom teachers, the students they supervise, and how we handle school safety. Staff should be given the opportunity to hear the pros and cons of each side, so they can make an informed decision. We should be made aware of the situation and at least be asked where our opinion is before a decision is made. Especially on an issue as critical as school safety. After all, we are the boots on the ground in the schools in the first line of defense if there is an event. You would think our opinions wouldn't matter. It is an understanding that three board members will make this decision. Mr. Nelson will not vote because he's chairman, Mr. Nelson probably will not vote due to conflict of interest. So three people will make the decision on this issue. I would like to share some of the concerns that I've heard from staff members. What happens if we get a new sheriff? Who decides who the SROs will be? We need to have a good working relationship between the two agencies. Will the SROs be on the campus the entire time? As a staff, we do not want to have rotating SROs. When I sat down with Brad and Cody this week, they answered my questions and addressed my concerns. All Graham County school staff need to have the opportunity to hear both sides before a decision is made, especially of this magnitude. My recommendation would be to not vote on this at the next board meeting. After speaking to our teachers, I feel we need to be better educated on what it would look like for the sheriff's office to be in charge of our SROs compared to having our company police. This is what we ask our students to do in the classroom, gather information, think about it, and then make an informed decision. Why shouldn't we as adults be held to the same standard? I appreciate Sheriff Hoxit and Officer George for sitting down with me this week to help me understand the office's role in this, and Superintendent Knight for listening to my concerns. I appreciate the school board for taking the time to listen to me tonight. I pray we can handle this as professionals, work together, and keep the most important thing in the forefront, and that is the safety of our students and staff.
Last from the public is Crystal Cody.
I'm Crystal Cody, I spent thirty years as a teacher, counselor, at Rockville High School. And I would like to share my feelings about the teacher changes, about the SRO, and what it's been about. Um, I do see this statistic, I'm a student of the SRO, I thought I was under the sheriff's department. That statistic, I mean, since then, we wanna be like everybody else. Now, we're Graham County, we're unique, we're one of three school systems in the whole state that only have three schools. Okay, we're small, and kids are special. Um, they're awesome. One, when I was a counselor, one person that worked with us, that came weekly, that worked with us for years, works with other schools too. And to her colleagues, she referred to us as a magical fairyland. Because our schools are wonderful. Other schools, other counties that are surrounding, she can't go in the classroom, okay? She has to come during the students' break. She works with all our students. She realized the teachers are great with her, they let her have that time because they know that's what's best for the students. So I don't know why we have to change anything. I've been at the school system for thirty years, our SROs are great, they have favorite teachers. They make us aware of threats, whether it's vaping drugs, how the students can hide the vapes, how they can hide a weapon, everything. They have us informed, and I really admire that. You know, the TikTok trends, whatever it is. The more informed we are, the better we can protect the kids. And I know all the teachers and faculty and staff want that, everybody's in it together. And, and I would also like the board to, I know there are lots of rumors flying about how this thing about, how this thing about. And it's important we're working, and we teach our kids to be calm, courteous, respectful, responsible, honest, and trustworthy. We expect the same from every board member. Okay, no behind the scenes, no, no promises, if I do this for you, you know, whatever, our kids deserve better, our kids deserve best. We should not ask more of our kids than we're willing to do ourselves.
And I signed up to speak, now please speak. I was, I spoke, I have a sheriff, not as an owner, a property owner.
Okay.
Now please speak.
Sure, and I'm glad you spoke up.
I don't mean to be rude, if I don't have to say. Thank you, sir.
The judging board, again, we generally promised, and I'm here as a property owner in Rain County, and I worked remaining load, and I've been here several years. This room has been misinformed, the SROs have misinformed this room as to what happened. And Leah got up and said that she spoke to Sheriff Hoxit, misstated the facts, and I believe the head of the SRO program has no excuse for not doing his job. If you need to mark your vehicles, you need to mark your vehicles. What the SROs are talking about was an incident that occurred on Friday, they didn't inform the sheriff's office until Monday. And we called the SBI in on Tuesday. Every one of the board members here can be held criminally liable and prosecuted, as were the folks in Cherokee County. The director of social services over there is a felon, I know that because I charged her. The lawyer over there is going to jail, and two of the supervisors were also criminally prosecuted for failure to discharge their duties. We're not here for folks to sit here and say what we can do after the fact. We're not here for folks to say, we can do a better job, and there's poor communication. It's not poor communication, it's failure to discharge their duties. These people are not doing their jobs. They're not doing their jobs, they're not communicating with the officer, the sheriff. Ma'am, I am telling you, I'm a sworn officer, and I am telling you, they are misinforming this county. They are misinforming this board, and if this board wants to go to jail for failure to discharge their duties, they can. And if the head of this SRO program wants to go to jail for discharge, failure to discharge his duties, he can too. Y'all sit here and clap your hands, I want every single one of you to stand in line, we've got a dead kid out here because they didn't talk about a school shooter. And then I want you to sit here like I did, over a state trooper's body with the blood pouring out of him, and sit here and talk about how we can do things better. You're here now, do your jobs now, you're here now. Uh, excuse me, it's his job, you gonna talk for him? I own land here, I am a member of Graham County, who are you to tell me? Well, then why are you interrupting my time? I didn't interrupt yours when you were speaking, why are you interrupting mine? You people need to wake up as to what world we're in. Night, the failure to discharge their duties. And by the way, your statements on mutual aid, it doesn't work that way, I know because I wrote statute. I was one of the folks that helped write the mutual aid statute. If you don't know what you're talking about, the law, don't speak, hold that up. Did you go to law school? No, then you're idiots when it's working. Sir! This case started on Friday. You, you don't even hear in the field, you don't know, you don't even know. This year, it started on a Friday. I started this investigation on a Friday. He's saying that it figured out till Monday? That's, I got that information on a Monday. When I got the investigation, found out this was going on, they were informed. So who wants to come up here and say, please don't come up here and run his mouth. The sheriff's office, Cody and Brad, need to give me the correct information, and quit trying to make us look bad and make them look good. It ain't been nothing but a bunch of lies and crap from the sheriff's office since this started. Right.
To the superintendent from the superintendent, Miss Anne Knight.
Well, I hope this is not gonna be what we got to perform. I've got several things I wanna say, but I want to say this, our kids, our faculty, our community, we're better than this here county. I would thank everyone for attending, disinforming me, regardless of your stance. We can all agree that the safety of our children is a vitally important part. As your superintendent for the last eleven years, I'm a division of your confidence and need to lead this school system. That's the evidence through your vote, for me as this educator, the past couple of years, when you told me this outpouring of kindness says I can now become a retired. The positive relationship I have with the community and its head of this school district, I think you need to hear two things. I'd like to summarize the school's position on this matter as transparently as possible. And I'm gonna be honest, I've sat here and I've been following it on the size of my paper, I'm in the weeds because our kids don't deserve to be in the weeds. I believe that if we're also willing to throw our concerns, our facts, and anything into here, this area is as polar surface to reasonable solutions. Now, if you'll indulge me as I speak, every one of, or most of you should have a piece of paper. That you're, I need you to just sit here while I'm talking and just walk that paper, make that right into a box. Now, just with me on this, I felt a point to make up against you, okay? So just have fun with that, we all might need to get a little rationale on what I've said here, all right? Here's a check of my thoughts on the situation, Mr. Superintendent. This, our first, this we're being here where we are today, has caused too much unnecessary stress and division. Graham County is better than this current division. Even if the officers that head the sheriff's office or the SROs deserve, they're insubtle to their integrity and the doubt this whole community has created. Because at the end of the day, each one of them has vowed to protect the circle, regardless of the circumstances, and you heard them all say, we are gonna back each other up. I have no doubt that each of them will back each other because that's what they do, they function as a brotherhood. This is unnecessary stress that straps for their proper roles to serve and protect our students and our community. It's very sad that we're here today having this debate in this fashion. It's very sad that we're here today having this debate in this fashion, it could have been handled very differently. I'm worried about some of the state nets that have been there, and I'm just hoping some of us, that, that time. Uh, the hours of the SRO, as far as the state definition worries me. People have already said, twenty hours a week, seventy weeks, at the minimum, and a gallon of beer. That's the appropriate situation, and maybe that's very easily available. Um, it scares me to think that we could enter into that outside agreement, that we could always revert back to the national definition. The whole issue could have been actually hatched down, discussed, and a plan presented that could serve both the agencies' needs, had it been approached in professional manner and not on a social media surface. This has sparked out controversy and widespread panic among our schools and our community. Our children and my staff and our community deserve better than this from all of us on both sides. While we feel like it's important for SROs to be school employees, there's been very valid reports made on both sides. And I'm appreciative that we have a community as well to step up for what they believe, regardless of what's under thrown in this, it's really important. But for the last twenty-five or thirty years, so we've been privileged to have access to our community, our schools, with our division. While there are handles with other districts who have avenues to learn protection, not all districts are chosen that far, that's okay. I'm okay with us being different, if it's a rough thing for our student staff and community, that would be something that's decided by someone other than me. Our approach has worked well, of course, there's been moving adjustments, and there seems to continue to be adjustments and agreements. This has kept our program, however, from being included in voluntary disruptions when the administrations have changed throughout the years and outside agencies. Our employees are always getting our duty to function as part of multiple supporting teams and are involved in employee level decision making. They're dealing with not only law enforcement, but also dealing exclusively with children. I'd like to give you an example, that if we have a student with special needs or behavioral issues, that's my instance. Do I live where I'm talking about there? If they need to catch up with the SRO, because they've already been involved, they understand the conference, the way that that child's educated, they know how to respond appropriately to that student. And I think an appropriate response could cause lifelong irreversible damages to our most vulnerable children. We need to be very careful who we have on our campus. Our children deserve officers who are trained not only as great for the law enforcement officers, but are also training our children's mental health and developing all the abilities. Working together. For the information out there, you think there's no working relationship? And we've talked about some of those things already, but there's a few things I would like to share, that's just not the case. As you said, as you've heard, education is a huge issue, both parts, I admit. You've heard, uh, appropriate, the, as you've heard, in cases where the appropriate information needs to be turned over for interaction in our agency action, it has to be so. I think this is up to all officers at all times. Nothing prevents officers from being here now. Our sheriff's office employees are invited to be in the schools now, we welcome them and our Christian, if they are on our campus. We even offered them free meals for the last ten years, and if they just walk through our schools and send them a ticket, that's a bonus. They have twenty-four hour access to our winter training facilities and we offer a training room that are in-service and training. As a matter of fact, our SROs also have the same in-service requirements and they train with them. Furthermore, officers are even no trainer, even for the in-service program of the officers. We partner on events for the community and our students, including Santa, Shopper the Cop. We try to invite our school resource officers and our sheriff's office to be able to be represented at events we're having on campus. Like, the sheriff's office was commanded to send us an officer and a vehicle over this past week at the sheriff's, at the children's center. The groundwork for a cooperative agreement is here. Funding, funding for our school resource officer or theory school, PR six sixty-nine, which is very much what Heather Jennings, Emily Barbas, and he has supervision. But Graham County, that constitutes one percent of our total budget, one percent. I think that's certainly reasonable enough to protect our children. Jurisdiction, that's a huge deal. I get it, valid, valid, um, information on both sides, but our school resource officers are here to protect our campus, period. Like, since then, I've not really hashed this. Our purpose is to be proactive, to build relationships with students, to work proactively with them. On the prevention side, hopefully, help the other agencies work on the reacting for the community side of issues. We feel the grand wars not being in homes, arresting family members, and permitting drug busts, or being reactive to situations, it's important, it's our event. Our children felt needed to stay at offices in their homes during things that children may not fully understand, they're necessary for the sheriff's department to be a part of. Our sheriff's office is fully capable and charged in dealing with community issues. Our, our children are trying to maintain that positive helper relationship with our council members, warning after trauma occurs, and continue to stick them in a positive light. Reasonable solutions, I feel like if you're going to throw out all these concerns, you need to come up with reasonable solutions. So if you'll indulge me, or if you don't want to, that's fine, but you've got a piece of time to play. I want you now in the business to leave that right there. And we do this with kids, so spoiler alert, your school resource. Thank you. Because I feel that this is a salvageable situation, I would, as you've heard already, why don't we sit down at the technical adult's and discuss these issues that are pertinent to both agencies? Let's take the input from you, our stakeholders, and do the conditional research, and therefore develop a miraculous understanding between the two agencies that helps the strength of both agencies, both agencies having strengths. And the tools in the gather to provide a dynamic and resilient, you've heard that word? If there's a resilience factor, it needs to be from adults, we, we need it. It's not hard to expect it, yes, always do resilient. We need to provide a resilient safety net for our schools. If you need them here. True, and if, if, if everyone here, true, is in pursuit of, that it should be easy to lessen our differences and stand up for the best, both agencies have it all. And I'm about to make my point. Is this solution going to be easy? No. Much, the proof of paper that you're trying to smooth out, there will still be many holes. Some of the damage from this, unnecessary stress and division, much like that paper, will take time to iron out. It's not an overnight quick fix. We can get here in an overnight quick fix, and it will take room to happen. But at the end of the day, like that paper is still capable of functioning. And over time, and careful preparation, it could be a beautiful beginning to what could be the best situation we've ever had. The best one we've ever had with the best of both agencies. Is a school perfect? Absolutely not. Is the sheriff's office perfect? Absolutely not. Is it work meant for the students, the staff, the families in our community that have a safety program that every one of us can support and feel confident in? Absolutely. So I ask as your superintendent, that we, on both sides, lay down your daggers, your own personal agendas and opinions, don't worry about it, listen to the list of the bread, and work for the right solution that our children so virtually deserve. It is something that I've set up to be your superintendent, and it's something that everyone who cares about children should be willing to do on behalf of our precious.
Have a say. All in favor? Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.